...by Mr. Gallo.
I'm gonna do this first. I'm gonna do this first. Does that sound good? And this way, yeah, I wanna get down with it.
Thank you.
Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions on your new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. And if I go, please, just let everybody know, when you do come up to the microphone, please use the microphone, because it's not being recorded on a videotape. We can't hear you. So just please get caught in some of that. Thank you very much.
Evelyn Slakbar, what do you think, Thunderhead Plies? I just wanted, if you could just give a synopsis about the school resource officer and what that's all gonna entail for the high school.
I would be more than happy to.
Thank you.
I was looking forward to this question. Okay. So what Mrs. Slakbar is referring to is, on our agenda this evening, it is Resolution Fifteen W. And Resolution Fifteen W is asking the board to consider voting on a memorandum of agreement, which is both a security and financial partnership with our township for a school resource officer. And a school resource officer is a police officer for the town that for a hundred and eighty days during the school year will work in the high school. And that has been a conversation for some time between our board, between members of the town council, and our mayor. And it is a shared cost responsibility. So we're working with the town, so we will be able to share the cost of the officer for the time that the officer is here. And we are grateful for this opportunity, because although we had an SRO officer a few years back, we've never had one at the high school. And there are many, many benefits to it. The first is certainly working in tandem with the township is a great thing, because what it says very loudly for our school district is, we both and all care about our kids regardless of what seat that we're in. So we're grateful for that and for the consideration of the board. It also allows the opportunity for the students to get to know a police officer differently than just walking through the hallways, which they already do, and even differently than the lead program over at JK, where they're there for a course. It is someone who is going to be with them all the time and throughout. Now there, of course, if there is an emergency, you have someone that is far closer, although the response time for our police department is amazing, but you have somebody that's right in our own school. But they have the opportunity to forge relationships with kids that I think are going to be different than just coming through the hallway. They can also serve as a security specialist, so to speak, as far as talking with the teacher is concerned, and looking at the facility itself. And please know that although the person will be assigned to the high school, doesn't mean that they may not make their way over to the middle school to do the same kinds of things. They are assigned to the high school and they'll work under Mr. Pascal, and they will take their direction from Mr. Pascal, which is very important, because they are, for the time that they're here, one of our staff members. Outside of here, they'll be able certainly to see people around town. It has not been determined yet who the SRO officer is going to be. Chief Vitale thought that it was very important that once we reached this point, if we do successfully tonight, that Mr. Pascal and I have the opportunity to sit down with at least three of the officers he has already had trained for SRO training. That is a forty-hour extensive training, so you've got an officer member, it may be come into the school and be familiar with kids and disabilities, be able to work with our kids and come with two events. I couldn't be more excited to be at this place with the township and being able to recommend it to our board.
Okay. So what would a typical day for a school resource officer look like? Would the kids be... Would he be in an office? Would he be intermingling with the kids at the school?
I'm gonna answer the question with saying to you, having not had an SRO officer in this district at our high school, working with our principal and myself, I don't quite know. Will he have an office? Yes. If this all goes successfully tonight, John is developing some space and will order a desk, and yes, there'll be a place to call home base. Do I think that the officer will be in there much? No. But will there be times that he needs to be? Certainly. Do I see him walking through the hallways? Absolutely. Do I see him talking with kids in cafeteria? Absolutely. Do I see him perhaps planning some security-type lessons or workshops? Absolutely. But I'm going to defer to the principal, whom he works or will most exclusively, to determine what he thinks is best for our population and what's going on. Could he be at a football game? Could he be at a basketball game? Could we have a big, big nerd tournament? And we'll say, you know, something, we'd really like you to be at this. The kids wanna see you, and we'd like that extra level. So I think it's gonna be really fluid, Mrs. Slakbar, and I'm not... I don't wanna make something up and tell you at 7:00 AM they'll be doing this, and at 2:00 PM I know I'll find them here, because I believe that they'll be where they need to be based on the needs, and we have to allow it to unfold and become what it should be and can be.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Shon, did the report first. Yes, I do. Many of you are here, and we thank you for waiting. Our executive session was a little longer than expected. There were a number of things to discuss. So rather than go through my report this evening, I'm gonna start off with the best. And the best is, we are here this evening through video to acknowledge six of our staff members who have retired after long dedicated service to our district. It is about, I'd say about twenty-five minutes in total. We're gonna break in between each so that we can give you... Yes, Peter, five minutes. We're gonna break in between each so that we can give you just a little warm-up, a little summary of the person that we're gonna acknowledge. We're fortunate to have two of the retirees here this evening, and we do have little gifts, and we'll explain what they are. For those retirees who couldn't be with us this evening, we will make sure that what you are getting for those that are here, Joan and Sue, that they'll be mailed out to other people as well. So before I begin, I do wanna say that Dennis Fair, my redhead, has been instrumental in bringing the bird's-eye video to our district and spotlighting our staff members as we have throughout the district. And although this is our first run as far as acknowledging retirees, this would not have come to fruition if not for the work and the planning and the coordination that you have done. So our district is very fortunate, as are our staff members, to have you. So just for a sec, please, a second. Okay. We're gonna start off this evening with Christine Zimmerman. Christine Zimmerman has retired as our Director of Curriculum, but has also served as the Principal of Lenape Meadows School, as well as Principal of Betsy Ross School. Christine has been known for her strong work ethic and her focus on making programmatic growth for the sake of our students. Through her role of Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Christine has helped lead our district's mindfulness initiative, has started our parent academy... I can't see it. ...Tombay. It has been instrumental in coordinating efforts in preparation of our new theme addition. We celebrate Christine's twelve years of service to the Mawa Public Schools.
I'm Nikki Dennis. I'm the supervisor of business at Social Cities. My relationship with her started five years ago. As a new supervisor, I was not very direct. And she really taught me how to be formal and be part of the community, while still being heartfelt. She is a great example of work ethic, as well as being connected to children.
I'm Danielle Polwin, and I've been in the district for twenty-eight years. And I've been working with Christine since I became the supervisor. We both changed roles for the district that year, and so we kinda grew into our roles together, which was actually a kind of neat connection for the two of us. And I see Christine as an amazing example of work ethic. Late hours, long hours, always focused on what she believed in her heart was the right thing to do.
Chuck Rapp, fourth grade, math, science. That's my twenty-first year here. I started working at Betsy Ross at the same time Christine was moved from Lenape Meadows. I was moved from JK to Betsy Ross. We had a very good relationship right off the bat. I needed some assistance with the reading and writing aspect portion of it, because I hadn't done it in a number of years. And Christine was really great at getting me the help that I needed. She always found something nice to say, which is, I think, a good trademark of an educator, where they can find those positives and everything.
My name is John Pascal. I'm the high school principal, and I've been working in the district for twenty-eight years. I met Christine when she arrived here as Principal of Lenape Meadows. Christine and I have had a lot of conversations in her time here in central office. A lot of our conversations, frankly, are at night. She's usually working in her office. I'm usually working in my office, and I call her and go, hey, guess what? We're the only two here in campus. What are you working on?
At the end of the mindfulness cohort meeting, we were sharing one word that defined our experience that day, and she used the word legacy. And for me, it really resonated, because I believe in the work, she believes in the work, and when we came together, it made great things happen. You saw the tears in her eyes and the emotionalism of that moment for her, because she realized she was leaving something huge to be part of the district.
Christine is a consummate professional, but more importantly than that, I think what Christine brings to education is really a perspective that comes with heart, that comes with care. Whatever we're gonna do, let's do what's best for kids. That's always been her emphasis and her driving philosophy. You know, that has served her well at her positions, and I think that has served her mission well.
We've had opportunities to, you know, to share and talk about shop and, you know, just talking about personal things, too. I'm very happy that, you know, she's moving on to another stage in her life right now with her grandchildren. You know, she's put a lot of years in. I think, you know, she deserves this next step, the next phase in her life, and I wish her all the best.
I wish for her to be in that moment now of retirement and not be looking behind herself and not be looking ahead. She has so many wonderful family things going on right now for her to just be where she is and enjoy that.
We, as a team, will continue her work and deepen and broaden it. She has truly affected staff, students, and us as an administrative team amazingly, and I wish for her to know that.
I really feel that she's dedicated herself to her students, no matter what district she's worked for, often at the expense of her family. So I'm hoping she's able to use this time to really create some wonderful memories and experiences with her family and her grandchildren.
Christine couldn't be with us tonight, but...
All right. Joanne Barnard also could not be with us tonight, because she's in South Carolina, but she did use her cell phone to answer a few questions, so we'll have the opportunity to hear from Joanne. Joanne Barnard has served as a school guidance counselor at Mawa High School over the course of her time in district. In this role, Joanne has been momentous in building our guidance department's reputation, particularly through her knowledge of post-secondary opportunities for students, as well as her deep understanding of the college application process. Currently, Joanne is in South Carolina, where she is enjoying relaxation and family. We celebrate Joanne's eighteen years of service to Mawa Public Schools.
Hello, friends. This is Joanne Barnard. I spent eighteen and a half years in Mawa High School as a school guidance counselor. I have many wonderful memories of Mawa High School that I will take with me forever. I have loved the role that I've played. I have loved the colleagues that I have worked with. It has been a series of wonderful memories, wonderful connections, and people that I dearly love and will stay in touch with.
My name's Dominic Lee Adams. I worked the guidance at Mawa High School. I've been in education for twenty-five years, and I've worked at Mawa High School for ten, and I've known Joanne for the time that I've been at Mawa High School. The thing that I always remember about Joanne was Joanne had a way of supporting, advocating for her students. She would not just look at something as one path. She always liked to see if there was another avenue that we could pursue to help a kid, whether it's a student who needed a little extra help in class, or for students who needed additional accommodations in a 504 plan. Joanne always wanted what was right for students.
So I'm Joan Stewart. I'm the Student Assistance Counselor. This is my thirteenth year at Mawa. I support the guidance department in ways that are non-academic. So I would work with the guidance counselors, and in particular with Joanne. She had a great knowledge of her students. She advocated very well for them. She would fight very hard for what she thought was in their best interests. And sometimes her students didn't see that, and I think in the long run, she would be right. She knew college, the college process very well. She knew colleges very well. She could pick a great college for a student and know where they would really find their home.
I remember one time we went to Fordham University for a program. We went to the Bronx. We had dinner. We had lunch at Dominique's. Instead of Joanne coming home, she went to New York Temple Gardens, and she spent the rest of the day kinda just deep in Presiding and just kinda walking around and just enjoying the Temple Gardens. So that was something that was always... Joanne did what she wanted to do as far as, you know, she knew how to self-care and to kinda relax. She knew how to find peace and solitude, which she wanted.
When her husband moved before she did, they bought their house down in the south, and her husband moved. And I know that there were times when she was around here, she made a point of going to museums and going to parks, taking her dog to the park, and just getting out in nature. I think she found it very relaxing, and she had a very creative aspect to her, and I think that she knew that that was also therapeutic. It was a great way to unwind.
I'm enjoying retirement. I have stopped working now. I do plan to go back. I will be looking for a position here down in South Carolina, and I hope to continue working with students and families. This is something I've done all my life. I send my very best wishes to each one of you as you reach your summer vacations. I will be returning to Mawa for June graduation. Thank you for all of the wonderful memories that I have gathered at Mawa High School, and please stay in touch if you can. Love you all.
Our next retiree to be acknowledged is Robin Lowassner, who could not be here as well, as she is in Florida. Robin Lowassner has worked at Joyce Kilmer School as the main office secretary to the building principal. Robin's colleagues characterize her as reliable, intuitive, and able to make deep connections with those who enter the Joyce Kilmer School. Through her work in the school district, Robin has served as the leader for secretaries group, providing critical insight related to the inner workings of the functioning of the school. Currently, Robin is in sunny Florida, where she has found the time to enjoy the sun and sand with her husband. We celebrate Robin's twenty-one years of service to the Mawa Public Schools.
I've worked twenty-one years in the Mawa School District. All of those years were at Joyce Kilmer. I worked as a nurse for many years in different settings, but my last nursing assignment as a corporate and regional manager to a home care company, I feel gave me the best experience to apply for the secretarial position at Joyce Kilmer.
My name's Bottom LeFol. I'm a fifth-grade math-science teacher at Joyce Kilmer School. I grew up in Mawa. I'm a product of the Mawa District. For me, it's a privilege to be here. It's like being home. I'm here to talk about one of my favorite people I hadn't ever met at Joyce Kilmer, Robin Lowassner. I call Robin K.O.A.K., K-O-A-K, for the keeper of all knowledge. At Joyce Kilmer School, if there's anything you need, anybody who can get you something, anybody who can get you something done, it's always been Robin Lowassner.
I've been in the district for fourteen years. I've had the pleasure to work with Robin for ten of those years. Robin is just an amazing person with a gray heart, intuitive to everyone's feelings. There's always a great presence about her, very calming, whatever craziness was going on, she knew how to handle it.
And I've been working with Robin ever since I came here, and that's been seventeen years. She was wonderful. I mean, that's the person I wanted to work with after five years. I mean, she moved on, and then she came back and she became the secretary. She's real wonderful, and I miss her a lot.
My name is Ashley Adams. I'm the Assistant Principal at Joyce Kilmer. I think what's so great about Robin is that I only knew her for a couple of months, and she makes me feel like you've known her forever. She helped me set up, get everything done, helped me do my orders, helped me with the technology, and she was just really there for anything and anything that I needed.
I'm Michaeli Toro, principal here at Joyce Kilmer School. I've known Robin for seven years. I mean, there's so much to say about Robin. Her and I were truly a team. Often times people talk about, you know, whether it's a principal, secretary, or just whatever it may be. She was my partner. We would joke around all the time. I would call her Goose from Top Gun, because it was just, you know, just like flying and playing. You can't do it alone.
I have so many memories of the last twenty-one years. When I left JK, the biggest and most important memory that I took with me was the memory of my JK family. All of the staff members were so supportive of each other, always ready to lend a helping hand. I was fortunate enough to witness engagements, weddings, babies being born, and watching some of those babies go off to college or out into the workforce.
When I think of Robin, first of all, every time I've come to school and I would break into song, I'd like to say Robin enjoyed writing with me, because she just, she loved singing. She sang in a swing band, and so we had a connection that way, and almost every other way. It was comforting. You walk through that door, you'd see Robin Lowassner at her desk doing her thing. The day was gonna be okay.
Before coming here, before kids, she was a nurse. So she, you know, she was used to gory things, but one night we were working late, and I had to step out into the copy room, and all of a sudden I hear the scream. I come running out, and I see Robin standing on her desk, and she's like pointing at me like this, you know? This cute little field mouse. I mean, she could take the gory stuff, but when it came to this adorable little furry field mouse, again, she was standing on her desk.
Robin's retirement, I wish her all the best, and I hope that she gets to relax and rest and spend time with her grandbabies and family and just really enjoy the next part of her life.
I feel as though she's done so much for so many people here and given us such joy that's her time to just take a break. And like Ashley said, she would perfectly just enjoy her growing family.
I just wanna thank her. I'm so fortunate and thankful that I've known her and worked with her. So grateful for the times we had and looking forward to seeing her again and spending more time with her.
I'm gonna start crying. Thank you.
Robin, we miss you here at Joyce Kilmer every day. Not a day goes by I don't think about how much fun, how professional you were all the time, and how much you helped me personally every day I was at Joyce Kilmer School.
Since I've retired, I've been enjoying the sun and the sand, staying up late at night, sleeping late in the morning, and not having to rush off to start my day. This coming August, I plan on volunteering in the Manatee County Elementary Schools, helping students to learn to read or sharpen their reading skills. I'm also enjoying my almost one-year-old granddaughter, Chelsea Rose. She lives in Philadelphia, but I do get to see her often. My husband Eric and I are truly blessed, and I thank you for the opportunity to share. From Florida, I send love to all and hugs to my JK family.
Did you hear that breeze behind you? Oh, my gosh. Our next retiree is Joan. Hi, Joan.
Hi, Joan.
Joan's wonderful. Joan Mangan has taught at Lenape Meadows School, but early spent her time in district at Ramapo Ridge Middle School. While Joan has served in the capacity of home economics teacher, she has also served as an elementary teacher, as well as a teacher of specials at the middle school level. Joan exhibits a passion for middle-level education and is viewed by her colleagues as caring, positive, and a key contributor to the culture and climate to the middle school. We celebrate Joan's twenty-six years of service to Mawa Public Schools.
My name is Joan Mangan, and I have taught in the Mawa Schools for thirty years. The majority of my career has been here at the middle school. This has always been my home. I have a special place in my heart in Ramapo Ridge. I have always loved middle school kids. After thirty years of teaching, they can still make me laugh. I enjoy them. I've built a lot of really wonderful relationships, which will be probably the hardest thing for me to leave.
I'm Suzanne Millan. I'm the current Assistant Principal of Ramapo Ridge Middle School. I've been in district for seventeen years. I've known Joan for all of those years. Joan is just one of those teachers who always, always has the student's best interest in mind. From the time I started here as a teacher, I knew that she was someone that I should look to for cues and just how to understand how to be a great teacher.
My name is Denise Barrickio, and I am in the district sixteen years. I worked with Joan for five of those years, which were very wonderful years. She's such a dedicated teacher. She came to Lenape not really from a whole different subject area than when she was teaching, and she just really rose to the occasion, I have to say, and really, you know, dug down and really tried to understand what we were doing, the kids. It was just a wonderful experience working with her.
So I am Courtney Crella. I am currently the gifted and talented coordinator. I've pretty much been here my entire life. I've known Joan since I was ten years old. She was a teacher, then she was a colleague, and now a dear friend. She just always had an open door. She was nurturing and kind and caring. She made every student who walked into her classroom feel special. She was a remarkable teacher, probably what you really envision as an educator.
Always the highlight for me is the kids. No matter if I taught the little ones, who were so easy to love, and old schoolers, who there are days that are a little challenging to love, they are the reason that I have stayed in this career as long as I have.
She took the time to get to know you, what you liked, what you didn't like. She knew your strengths as a student. She knew what your weaknesses were as a student. She would love to try to make those weaknesses become strengths. She took that extra time to stop you in the hallway, ask how your weekend was, how your family was. Even on like spare days, she would go out of her way to bring in different type of clothing or objects or accessories to students that she knew didn't necessarily have them at home. She always would go that extra mile to make it special for each individual.
Middle school's a hard time. We used to have a superintendent who called it the twilight years, and they kind of are the twilight years. You know, it's the twilight zone for them. They're not little, they're not big. Everyone's trying to figure out where they belong, and I hope that I've had a role for a lot of them in helping nurture them from sixth grade to eighth grade. Lots... I've had lots of people come back and visit me over the years and thank me for things that I've done for them, so that's very rewarding for me.
I had the distinct pleasure to be invited to several of Joan's breakfasts and lunches that she put together for the students to host, and those are some of the fondest memories I have of being in Joan's classroom and seeing her as a teacher, interact with the students, help them to understand how to be gracious hosts and to speak to adults with manners and serve food, and it was just really neat to see the students outside of my language arts classroom in that realm.
Joan is always positive, and I like to be around positive people. Every day, there was always a smile on her face, always a story to share. Joan and I would just have some great conversations about all kinds of things, and I have to say, I really miss that since she went back to Ramapo Ridge. Those are some of the fond memories I have of Joan and I having those nice conversations.
Joan brings a true sense of professionalism and collegiality with, you know, all of the teachers here in the building. And again, like I said earlier, she always has the student's best interest in mind, and that will be missed. She's always kind of been like a mama bear to all of us as teachers and also to the students. I know that that will be a void that is surely felt as she retires this year. And I wish her the best in her retirement, because she really deserves it.
Well, you know, I leave with mixed feelings of leaving, because my whole life as an adult, all I've ever been is a mom, a teacher, and a wife. So I'm giving up one of those roles, so I, you know, I have mixed feelings about that. My husband is also retiring. He's retiring next week, and so our plan is to relax a little and do some traveling, things that we were not really able to do as we raised three children. I feel like it's the right time for me. You know, everyone told me, you'll come and you'll know that it's the right time for you. I'm looking forward to the next chapter, you know, and I... We still have a lot of energy, so I think it's gonna be a great time for us. We're really looking forward to it.
Before we... Before we... Congratulations, Joan.
Thank you.
Before we... Before we come out and present you with a gift, and we're going to do that, it is what we have given out for retirements in the past, and it's a beautiful marble apple. But the great part about it is not the apple itself, because we ordered that, but the great part about it is the stand that the apple sits on. And the reason that it's so special is because it wasn't ordered, it was made, and it was made for you. And it was made for you by Dan Gordon, who is our woodshop teacher, right, over at the high school, as well as an eleventh grader and a twelfth-grade student who have... And I can't see it, because I'm sorry, my eyes are going. Joe Batavia, thank you, and Nick Cabrera, who is a senior. And each of them, teacher and student, have signed on the bottom of the base. And it also includes a little sticker plaque that says, "With sincere appreciation." It is something that we hope doesn't end up on a shelf collecting dust, but something that serves as a reminder, the red of the apple, for how much we... but something that serves as a reminder, the red of the apple, for how much we loved working with you. So we're coming out.
Oh, thank you. That's so nice.
And a Hershey bar with a Maua Thunderbird and a hug.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you like to say anything?
Yes, I just wanted to thank all of you for the opportunity to work here. It's been a very special place for me in Maua. It's kind of been my home for like 30 years. So I taught here for a few years and then I left, as moms did in those days, and I was home for seven years and then I came back. So I've been here most of my adult life. And, you know, I've had the wonderful experience of having people like Courtney that I've known from the time she was 10 and, you know, visited me all through high school, college, and then became my colleague. So it's been a great experience. Thank you for sharing the children. The children in Maua are really something special. And I look forward to my next chapter. You know, it's bittersweet, but I think I'm ready for the next chapter. So thank you all very much. This was lovely.
Thank you, Sue Dorsa. Are you ready?
I think so.
Yes, you are. Our next retiree is Sue Dorsa. Sue Dorsa taught at George Washington School and retired from Lenape Meadows School as a first-grade teacher. Not only is Sue a product of the Maua school system, but she also serves as a legacy, following in her mother's footsteps, who has also been a teacher in our school district. As the leader of the MEA, as well as the leader of our grade-level team, Sue has been a member of our staff, to which her colleagues often rely on her for both information and support. She leaves behind a recognition of collaboration that are essential when working in her leadership role and her knowledge of and dedication to the school district will be missed. We celebrate Sue's 25 years of service to the Maua schools.
My name is Sue Dorsa. I've been teaching for 25 years. I taught 19 at George and my last six here at Lenape. I taught first grade and second grade. And I am president of the MEA Union. What I really liked about working in Maua is that my mom had worked in Maua and being able to work in the same school that she did and, you know, continue the legacy that she had created here. I thought that was fantastic. And, you know, the friends that I've made here, some of them are lifelong friends. It's been a really great experience. I'm going to sorely miss it.
My name is Donnie Tell. I'm the principal of Lenape Meadows School. Some things about Sue that I can share are she's exciting in the classroom. It's nice to walk by her room and see the students engaged. And one of the things I truly enjoy is her Friday read-alouds, seeing the students in little groups where they're sharing and reading to one another. She's taken the opportunity for students to be leaders.
I'm Dorothy Eason. I'm the Assistant Principal. Sue is a breath of fresh air some mornings, you know. The children get to see her in a different light than what we see her in. She has welcomed all new staff and myself as a new Assistant Principal at Lenape last year. She was like a veteran person who I could go to and, you know, ask questions about the past or, you know, what does that look like, you know? Because you're new to the school. It's a new culture for me. Just having that opportunity to tap into someone who has been in Maua so long to give you that experience and that information is really great.
Hi, my name is Joanne Samorsky. I've been working with Sue Dorsa for the past six years at Lenape Meadows School. Sue was willing to try and do anything that I had asked her to do as long as it didn't involve glitter and glow. But she tried everything and was a trooper, so it was really fabulous working with her.
Hi, my name is Ursula Uzar and I've been in the district for 21 years. When we first met, her, her mom, Madonna Dorsa, was my cooperative teacher. One of the things her mother had said was, "Please reach out to my daughter. She teaches in district. She'll get you acclimated." And I called her over the summer and I said to her, I said, "So," I said, "What are some things, some pointers that you can give me?" And she's like, "OJT. That means on-the-job training." She's like, "I can only tell you so much, but until you're actually in the classroom, you're not gonna be able to find your way. I can give you some pointers, but honestly, it's, it's like you're gonna make mistakes and you're gonna get through them." So that's the biggest thing that I remember about Sue.
She's the veteran. I think she's the backbone of that team. They've come to rely on her.
When they submit lesson plans, they submit as a team. So Sue's in charge of that aspect and she does submit for the team and, you know, speaks for the team a lot of the times. And they really take her feedback and run with it.
She has an encouraging, motivating way about her that gives you a calm presence. No matter what you need, she has your back. She's, her leadership skills are phenomenal.
She lives in Maua. She grew up in Maua. And so she's very dedicated to the staff and like Ursula said, always listens and is very fair.
Getting together as, as group and really building that, that team, that was a lot of fun. You know, starting a recycling program over at George, that, that was great too and see how it came through the entire district. Going to different schools, meeting new people, some old people and then, you know, really becoming very good friends with them. So there's been a lot of, a lot of great memories.
For me, as a novice golfer, Sue and I often have conversations about our days out on the green.
Well, she loves her golf. That's like number one when she has time off. That's gonna be, I'm gonna join the Tuesday, Tuesday nine group. That's a ladies' group. I guess I do nine holes Tuesday mornings.
Miss Dorsa is great because, um, like she like brings coupons so that we could do like things that we can't do in school. Like there's like this coffee cream coupon. You can bring your stuff down. Show and tell. You can bring in something to share with your class. So one time, uh, we got our map journals out and she said, "Go in 18, 146." And it was the wrong page. She didn't know. It's supposed to be 148. And the whole class said, "It's the wrong page." And she started laughing, but we, we were starting writing on the wrong page, but then after we were done, she let us do whatever.
So I want people to remember to honestly to work together because that's something I've tried to do at every school that I, you know, that I've been in. And working as a team, you know, just collaboratively. So I want people to remember that, that's, that's really important.
Sue, there is no doubt that we're gonna miss you. No doubt. Have you ever been at the mic before?
I just wanna say, I've, I've had a great 25 years. I've had some of your children and I, I really have enjoyed my time. You know, whether it's through at George Washington, at Lenape, working with administration, working on negotiations, working with my teams, my principals. It's been great and it's a wonderful place to work. And great memories and thanks very much for the ride.
Thank you, Sue. Last but certainly not least, Jimmy Toronto. He has served as a health teacher for Ramapo Ridge Middle School. Not only has Jimmy helped to make health education engaging for students, but the impact he has had on our student athletes as a coach, as well as the impact he has had on his colleagues is hard to put into words. His fellow teachers have referenced Jimmy as an admirable human being who brought a sense of authenticity to Ramapo Ridge Middle School that will be forever remembered. Many staff members have shared thoughtful memories that have showcased Jimmy's unique sense of humor and his passion in bringing people together. He certainly did this every day on the job at Ramapo Ridge. While this video is in memory of Jimmy, we also would like this video to serve as a celebration of his 24 years of service to our district.
Jimmy and I really started here. He was in the district for a short time. Was more in a part-time position. I've known him for quite a long time and just from the moment I met him, just a real genuine guy. Jimmy was Jimmy. I talked to my, my kids. They're three, they're teaching. They talk about the three Rs. But in life, I believe there are three Bs. Be kind, be humble, be positive. Jimmy was every one of us. He was just a great guy to be around. If you're a little bit down, he'd find a way to lift you up. We just had just a great relationship. You know, that's, that's something I'm always gonna treasure, knowing Jimmy.
One of my favorite memories of Jimmy is the last few eighth-grade trips that he attended. He showed up in full tourist outfit and it just cracked me up because I, at that point, I was running the trips and it was just that extra lightheartedness that brought some levity to the trip and the kids really appreciated it. He was decked out in full plaid, you know, Hawaiian shirt, hat, the, you know, the sunglasses and everything and flipped up fanny pack. I mean, total embarrassment, but he didn't care. He did it all for the kids and for their entertainment. I really loved that about him.
Well, I worked with Jim for 10 years. The best thing about Jim was his sense of humor, that it was outrageous. You never knew what he was gonna say. But whatever he did say was usually funny, to the point where you would be laughing hysterically on the ground or it would just fall flat and nobody would know what to say. That awkward silence that no one knew how to react at that point.
Since I am a veteran of the building, I've known Jimmy all the years that he taught here. We had a very close personal relationship. Jimmy was hilarious. Jimmy, although he never taught phys ed, always looked like he was teaching phys ed. And one year, Mike Tremblay and all the guys came dressed up as Jimmy for Halloween. They all wore winksuits and had clipboards and whistles and it was, it was really absolutely hilarious. And Jimmy at first didn't get it and then he looked at me and I was like, "Oh, they are you, Jimmy." It was really, it was really very funny. We used to really have just a great time with Jimmy.
Coach Toronto was my freshman football coach. Getting to know him as a professional was a lot different. I just, I just really miss just being able to come to work and ask him serious head coach, coaching questions, just because he, he had so much experience and been doing it for so long. And me being young, I just really looked up to him and always picked his brain and he always gave really good advice. He was real supportive of me and I really miss that.
I taught with Jimmy for four years, 40 and a half years. And I remember sports night, my first year I was there, sports night, he was in the same outfit, standing on top of the volleyball thing, refereeing the game but so like, I don't wanna say dramatically, because I wouldn't call Jimmy dramatic in any way, but so.
Enthusiastic.
Enthusiastically and just, you know, also for the kids, like what you were saying. And I was playing in one of the games and I just remember feeling like, I wanna be like that. You know, throughout my whole career for the kids, you know?
I taught with Jim for 17 years. Just had a great way of having a different relationship with everyone, to make them feel special and make them just feel comfortable wherever they were. Jimmy would always love to get the guys together. And so one year, he decided on the last day, he was gonna get a full faculty, male faculty. We'll get to that part later. Stay cool. Got off to a great start and probably about halfway through the game, our principal at the time, Brian Miller, didn't know where we were and the game kinda extended past our, our lunchtime that was designated for that day. And Mr. Miller came out and told us in a firm voice to get back in.
I met Jimmy when I came up here from George Washington School in 2010. He quickly took me under his wing. He brought great morale to our department. I miss him every morning saying, "Hey, Mayor, why are you wearing that?" He's the one that always called me Mayor. And he's always been genuine besides teaching and engaging our students. He was a great role model for me, bringing up kids. He's truly missed.
To all of our retirees, those here and those not here, we are very happy that we all had the opportunity to work with you and for you to work with our students. We're very grateful and very fortunate. Thank you. So it has been a long night for you. We have to hang out still, but you are welcome to head on your way if you guys would like to.
Hey, Mr. Reader. Do you have anything for us this evening?
Yes.
It's okay. Now let him have a push, please.
Good evening. The one item I want just to address and bring to the board's attention is item 15 on the agenda, something we do every year at this time of year and that's authorize a transfer to the capital reserve account. We do put an up-to-max on it in there. This year we have $1.5 million. That number will be finalized as the audit is completed, which is scheduled to be done over the summer. Once that is finalized, we will establish what that number exactly is. I do not foresee us going up to that $1.5 million. Again, we'll saps that number once the audit is complete. That's my report.
Thank you.
Yes, if I can, just a couple of things, just a couple of updates if I may. As you pulled in today, if you had not been by our high school campus, you would have seen the fencing that is up with the black privacy screen that's on it. That is all in preparation for our steam edition. A construction fence was installed this last week. Trees around the construction area within that area have been taken down. We have one construction trailer on site. That is for our construction manager. We have a second one that's coming for our construction company person. And that's on the other side of building seven. In the next week or so, they'll begin stripping the ground, so they're gonna remove all of the grass area within that area. Our construction manager confirmed that all necessary permits have been issued. All of our construction workers, anybody working on site, will have clear fluorescent tags that will say what company they're with, what name, and they'll also have a thunderbird on them. So even if they come from another site and have something, they're made to have the thunderbird that's on it. We'll have a construction manager on site all time, once the trailer arrives. And we have scheduled a very brief but important groundbreaking ceremony at 6:30 PM on June 27th, which will be inside of that area, complete with hard hats and shovels and dirt. So we'll be sending out some information about that for the board. And just an update about security, if I may. I've been trying to do this as we move along, just to kind of give everybody, keep everybody up to speed with where we are. Lobby guard will be installed at Joyce Kilmer and Lenape Meadows this summer. That's assuming that the board will vote and approve that resolution on this evening. An architect has create, created designs to reconfigure. That's Eros GW and Ramapo Ridge entrances for a double-door entry system. We're in the process of reviewing those, so we'll have some more information as we go forward. We're moving forward with the purchase of.
Ballers.
Ballers in front of Ramapo Ridge. They will hopefully, they take about six weeks to construct, so hopefully they'll be in place this summer. And then we'll continue to look into other areas that they would be appropriate and purchase.
Excuse me. You had mentioned flower pots, large flower pots.
They are, the ballers.
Oh, they will be?
Ballers. No, they aren't. Yes, they are large flower pots, like 1,000, 1,100 decorative ballers.
Flower ballers.
Decorative ballers. We're gonna be meeting tomorrow morning. We talked about the fact that Chief Patelli and Captain Jaffe had given us a list of security recommendations. I had shared that with the board at the last meeting, told you we were going to schedule the meeting. That meeting is scheduled for tomorrow morning with the executive committee of our board, Captain Jaffe and Chief Patelli. And that'll be tomorrow morning. There are approximately 27 recommendations that are on that list, many of which we've vetted internally, so we'll have information for the board. And then once we go through that meeting, I'll be able to update the full board with what our commentary is on each of those recommendations. Other than that, we are enhancing our intrusion alarm systems at Ramapo Ridge and the high school. So we are upgrading them. and the high school, uh, so we are upgrading them. And last but not least is the SRO, which is on for board approval this evening. So, we are moving toward, um, some really good security initiatives, but again, it's an ongoing discussion.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Fair, do you have anything for us this evening? You finished?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, uh, my report. On, uh, June 5th, um, I had the pleasure of attending Mawa High School Achievement Awards and on Monday, June, uh, Friday, June, uh, no, I'm sorry, Monday, June 11th, the Mawa Senior Awards and Scholarships. So, kudos to all those students that received awards and scholarships. It was quite an impressive evening at both events. Uh, Friday, the 6th, uh, the, uh, the 8th of June was, uh, and the 9th was the Mawa High School Art Show. And, um, I, I know that Mr. Gallo was there, saw you. Quite impressive. I mean, it really was. We had a lot of talent in our school and, um, it was a great thing to see and hear the kids perform and it was, it was a wonderful, wonderful evening. Um, the Gifted and Talented Program, grades 6 through 12, participates in the Future Problem Solving Curriculum, developed in 1974 by creativity pioneer Dr. E. Paul Torens. Future Problem Solving, also known as FPS, is a dynamic international program involving thousands of students annually from around the world. Our students are taught a six-step model of problem solving, which teaches critical and creative thinking, enhances writing and vocabulary, and reinforces important life skill such as communication, innovation, and collaboration. This year's curriculum had students researching and creating solutions for infectious disease, toxins, toxic materials, cloud storage, and philanthrocapitalism.
Right.
The key to the FPS curriculum is students' focus on what is happening in the world today through active current research and predict and analyze what might happen in the future, empowering our future leaders. Twenty-eight students in total represented the Mawa School District at the International Competition, which consisted of 39 states and nine countries. Our students were given the task of addressing the criminal justice system. A group of sixth graders, Molly Fier, Mark Lachinsky, Kaylee Hyung, Zoe Wen, were, were on a mission. As a team, they placed in the top two throughout the school year and ultimately clinched an invite to the international competition by winning the New Jersey State Bowl. Determined and focused, this incredible group would go on to place sixth out of 69 teams from around the world. It's China, Singapore, Australia, Norway, France, New Zealand, and Turkey, to name a few.
Woo! You did that very well.
Anapurov competed in the multi-affiliate global issues problem solving along, working alongside students from Connecticut, Mississippi, and Texas. This incredible team of four students placed second in the middle division. Anthony Del Avocado earned a spot on the trip as a competitor in the multi-affiliate global issues problem solving junior division. As a team of four, one student from Texas, North Carolina, Nebraska, and New Jersey, this team collaborated to place third. As the youngest member for Team New Jersey, Alyssa Blajuski had the honor of flag bearer for closing ceremony. So please apologize if I make any, um, if I, I do not pronounce your names correctly, but hopefully I will get them. Uh, community problem solving is a team or individual activity in which students identify real problems and implement real solutions in a community, local, state, national, or even global. At the endless hours of hard work and commitment to bringing awareness to the potential dangers of using prescription opioid drugs, the CNPS team comprised of Joanna Lee, Matt Brandt, Kyle Springer, Sebastian Dietrich, Arine, Arine, Arineia Isaya?
Arena.
Arena, okay. Andrew Des, uh, Desdissimo.
Don't get her to come up.
She, she...
You're really fast now.
Mr. Hall, that would be great. Hey, Delina, Mark Zitar, Rebecca Solomon, Matthew Scrod, and Connor Tevis traveled to the University of Wisconsin-Lacrosse to spread their message. Competing against the best of the best from around the world, the individual evaluators awarded Project Nopoid third place. Competing as an individual in the senior division, Brianna Stues took the conference by storm with her work on Project Premie. The goal of her project was to aid families going through this difficult time by providing necessary and useful resources. Her commitment to the cause and families affected awarded her first place at internationals.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Through their participation in community, our students learned powerful lessons about creating change, dealing with local authorities and organizations, and making a positive impact on the world around them. So congratulations to all our students on their success and to our coordinator of the Gifted and Talented Program, which includes the FPS classes, Courtney Correll. And that is my report for this evening. Uh, board committee reports, do you have any? Committee reports this evening.
Way less fun than that.
All right. I get the gist now.
For, uh, Policy Committee, 15E, uh, we have a second reading and adoption of six policies and regulations that we saw on our roll last week.
Thank you. Um, yes, Mr. Hall.
The Finance Facilities Committee met, uh, prior to today's board meeting to discuss our capital plan and specifically, we focused on some of the security initiatives and the parking and traffic situation at the high school. Uh, Negotiations Committee met yesterday with, negotiations committee met yesterday with the, uh, Principals Association, the MAA, uh, and we made considerable progress in bridging our, uh, gaps. And we will be meeting with the supervisors, representatives next Tuesday.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yes, uh, New Jersey School Boards, or Bergen County, uh, Bradson Jersey School Board. I'm happy to announce that, uh, Ms. Barron received, was recipient of the, uh, certifiable, certified, certified board member level.
I appreciate that. Um, do anyone else?
Go ahead. Actually, I have one other. Kyle and I attended a New Jersey School Boards, um, sponsored security conference 10 days ago or so, on a Friday. Um, it was very informative. Um, one of the breakout sessions I attended was on cybersecurity, which made me scared about all my banking and my PIN numbers and I was scared. But, um, it was very helpful from a perspective of schools, overall school security, the things that schools can do. Many of them are sort of small things that can greatly enhance our security. Most of the things that I heard about, I have already known are happening or happened in Mawa, so that was reassuring. Um, so, but it was, it was a very productive day.
Um, as instruction curriculum, um, I don't know if I could say something dealing with that committee, if you may. Go ahead. Um, I attended, um, a gathering the other day that the New Jersey Department of Education put together regarding park perspectives on the park testing. And, uh, the Department of Education is going around the state, um, on a listening tour, basically, and, um, having everybody brainstorm. So they had administrators, they had teachers, they had parents, they had, um, a lot of people there, broke out into little groups, and just asking us our thoughts on the testing, uh, on a test for our high school graduation requirement, um, what we see as a short-term, um, fix to this issue, what we see as a long-term issue. So if you happen to, you know, if you want to go on the website, the New Jersey Department of Education website, you can look and see where they're going to be next and, um, hopefully go and air your opinions. You can also go down to Trenton at any time and talk to them as well. So, um, just want to, you know, that is what's happening on that front. Um, there was a question about, um, grandfathering in sophomores this year because they had changed the requirements that they needed to take the park exam in order, um, to pass graduation. So they're, they're asking if they can be grandfathered in, so that's sort of up in the air. So everything's kind of up in the air right now, as it has been for a long time. I just wanted to share that with everyone. Um, any board member remarks or additional comments on any on agenda items? Yes?
At previous meetings, I have informed the board of the, uh, the new law that was coming down the path, pass, pass the trash, which prevent, uh, school district from picking up the trash from another district. And, uh, it came to fruition on June 1st, it was signed. And if you'll notice at, on 16E through J, through I, you'll see the final three words, um, pending certification employment verification. Each, each district who had previously owned this person, uh, has to submit to our question, it's a standard question as to whether or not that person was, um, reliable. Now, it has far-reaching effects, and I'm gonna pass it over to, uh, to Kyle. Uh, he was at a recent, uh, meeting of the BAs, you knew it was coming. The BAs at Bergen County and we're showing our dual diligence, we're, we're going to do what?
Um, what he's referring to is this extend beyond our district employees to those that work in our buildings that may be, um, employed by an outside, uh, agency. Um, and that we are, uh, also reaching out to them just to make sure that they are fully aware of the law, that it needs to be implemented at their level as well, and affirming that they're doing so, that they're aware of it.
Finally, um, there's a video series put on by, uh, New Jersey School Boards at their website, it's called Conversations on School, excuse me, School Security. It runs about three to four minutes and talks with topics of what's an SRO officer, a class three officer, how to establish relationships with your local police force. It's informative and they're selling three to four minutes each video date. And I believe that if you go to the New Jersey School Boards website, the public can see it also. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, old business, may I have a motion to old business, Mr. Wenderkowitz, second by, um, any discussions on old business? Everybody's good to go? Could you take a roll call, please?
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmorsky.
Stay.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Saco.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
And Ms. Barron.
Yes. I'd like a motion to proceed on 15A through W. Mr. Wenderkowitz, second by Dr. Morthe. Any discussions, comments on any of these items?
I have abstained from check number 91028. The rest ones, my turn, I'll take.
Thank you. Okay, could you take a roll call?
Mr. Gallo.
Yes, except on 15A, I will abstain from check number 90928.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kizmorsky.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes, my one is abstention.
Ms. Saco.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
And Ms. Barron.
Yes. And I'd like to take new business personnel A through W, a motion to proceed, Mr. Wenderkowitz, second by Mr. Gallo. Any comments, questions, concerns on any of these items? That is good. Okay, could you take roll call, please?
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmorsky.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Saco.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
And Ms. Barron.
Yes. Public questions or comments? Now, this section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes.
Brooke Gasol, 552 out of our death court, sorry to hear you come in a lot. Thank you. Um, I'm speaking tonight because of all the rumors that have been going around, that have grown surrounding the large amounts of teachers that have resigned and been suspended. I understand that there has to be some level of privacy when dealing with these issues, as I also work in education. I also feel when it comes to our children, we are owed a little bit more than a number and an agenda with no information. My son at the ridge did not have lessons for more than five weeks prior to the concert because his instructor seemed to disappear. I feel I'm owed more than nothing when his teacher just disappears and emails something. And please do not put this on Mr. Vander Mullen, who I feel takes his lead from you, Dr. Schoen, and the Board of Ed. However, that's a whole other discussion we can get into. Um, and then there's the case of Mr. Thoman, who my daughter gets lessons from. I was told he has resigned, but that hasn't been in the Board of Ed minutes yet? Is that the case?
I'm gonna wait, if you don't mind. I'm gonna wait until you're finished, so that I can address everything all at once if I may.
Okay, well, that's, I have more surrounding that, something else.
What I can't do, and I understand that you want more, what I can't do is I can't discuss staff members. And, and Mr. Vander Mullen, um, I would certainly not blame an administrator or put anything on an administrator. At the end of the day, I need to answer to everything, right? Um, I can't go into personnel with you. Um, people, people do a variety of things and people choose to leave our district for a variety of reasons and, and you've been at board meetings, right? And Dennis will talk about, you know, resignations are often for a variety of reasons, but unfortunately, I'm left with not being able to say anything or to answer questions in regard to staff members.
Okay. That's fine. However, when there are forced resignations, that's like a different thing to me, um, so...
Well, let me start with it, if I may. I never said that. I never said that. And you had, you had started off, actually, we're talking about rumors. And we know what rumors do.
Oh, I know, but I've actually spoken to some of these teachers who are, I mean, like, I, I'm, as I said to Kim last night at this park event, I said, "I, I know some of these teachers, I've become friendly with them. I know people in education outside of this district..."
Right.
"...that now know people in Mawa that have come back to me and said, 'This is what's going on with your teacher, that's why he's not there.'" Um, I have...
I ask, I ask.
And I know that's rumor.
I just asked.
It could be hearsay as well. I understand that completely. However, at the same time, we get nothing as far as, I, I sign my son up for lessons, he gets nothing from the district. I get no information at all, except for rumors that I can hear from here, there, and everywhere. And I'm like, none of this is the same information. There's just overall general unhappiness from the teachers that I hear from constantly and a barbecue at the last day of school isn't going to heal that. I'm telling you, that's just what's come back to me as a parent and a co-educator to the people that I've been listening to.
I, I understand, Mrs. Gasol, that this is, this is how you're feeling and I understand that you've heard a number of, of different things. I understand. And, and I don't know how much of that is rumor and I don't know how much of it is fact. I don't know whether you've spoken to the teachers themselves and they've told you certain things and you're coming here with that information. I will not confirm anything that it is that you're saying in regard to, to staff members. I can understand from your seat as an educator and a parent, how that might be very frustrating. And I, I get it. And every board is left with exactly the same, we're in the same position. We can't, we can't tell you a story. We can't tell you the exact reason. And so you're left listening to rumors and perhaps thinking that something is worse than it ever was.
Oh, I know, but I'm just asking for like a general, like, Mr. I has taken a leave of absence. That's all I'm looking for.
I can't, I can't do that because, because people could take leave of absence for all sorts of, of different reasons.
But they're already taking it for all sorts of different reasons and you're not replacing him with anybody, so the teacher's not being replaced at this point and we have...
Well, we, we can certainly talk about what substitute is in place for that and we can do that privately, but as far as a conversation about this. Um, last but not least, if I may, are you, did you finish the comments that you had, Mrs. Gasol?
Um, I mean, until I know for sure that Mr. Thoman has resigned, I do have to...
But I'm not, I can't and I won't talk about that anymore. But I do have to make a comment, if I may. May I? The barbecue that we're doing at the end of the school year soon is what we're doing to celebrate our staff, that we care a great deal about. I am sorry that the input that you are receiving is that it is not appreciated because we have heard from hundreds and hundreds of employees that they are so grateful and appreciative that, that we're doing this. So, we're gonna continue because our hearts are in the right place and our teachers deserve to be celebrated. We are not looking to heal or improve, we're just looking to say thank you.
Okay, I'm sure you are, I'm just...
I know, but when you make, when you make it and say that that's not gonna heal anything, it wasn't meant with any other intent but the goodness...
Well, it's supposed to boost morale, it was done by the morale...
But I believe that it will. And we hope that it will. Thank you.
Sure.
Evelyn Slatter, 43, in her place. Um, Mike, you mentioned about the parking lot. Could you just, uh, give a little brief update about it?
We sent some questions over to the town, to Chief Patelli, and he's responded to some of our inquiries and there's, we have some ideas that we're considering, um, but we want to work with the town and at some point, we'll probably be working with the town engineer.
and we're looking at some near-term things and some longer-range things.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
David May, 93 Owina Road, I was wondering, is there a timeline for the cell phone tower construction? What are the process of this?
The processes right now are finalizing the last pieces of lease agreement with them. Once that's in place, they would go to the planning board and present to them and obtain these proper releases and permissions that they need to from that process. As far as a specific timeline, as far as when a shovel is going to go in the ground to work, and they will be constructed, I don't have that at this time.
And then I also just wanted to mention, I was walking past the wooded area at the back of Betsy Ross this morning, and noticed there's a lot of like, split trees and trees that are coming out of the ground. Somebody want to check that out?
I will.
Facilities wise. Yeah, it's a lot of, could be dangerous, people walk through there.
Kyle, you got that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for, Matt, thanks for your support of the SRO.
Yes.
Thank you, you're good.
No, thanks, till after tomorrow. Let's make it official, let's make it official.
Eliminate everything. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn? Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Joyce? So, hi, Liza Green.
Can you please, close the microphone, yeah?
So some of you might be wondering why I keep coming back. My husband wonders why I keep coming back. I've been wondering myself, time after time, I feel like I'm the only one here. I don't feel like my message is being heard, and I leave feeling frustrated, always feeling embarrassed, always feeling stupid. I hate standing up here, speaking in front of people, and being recorded for the internet. So why do I keep putting myself in this position? So, because the safety of my children and every child is important, and I feel like we're missing opportunities to work as a community, a community of teachers, administrators, law enforcement, parents, and students. This isn't enough, me standing here expressing my position, and you sitting there expressing your position, it's just, it's not enough. We need to come together as a community to do, community to do more. All of the measures behind the scenes, and some of the reports that were given tonight are so valuable, and I think if we come together even more as a community to exchange ideas, we can even bring more value. You all probably know that the final report regarding the school security task force from the New Jersey School Board Association says specifically that local school districts should form committees representing all the stakeholders, staff, parents, administrators, emergency responders, law enforcement, community members, et cetera, as part of their efforts to develop school security plans, to assess the plans on an ongoing basis, and to identify necessary enhancement of the school security, sorry, school safety protocols, equipment, and staffing. Also, in the report, it includes recommendations to even include others, such as school maintenance workers and students, which I think is a really important piece. They talk about engaging the full community. So months ago, the board specifically raised the topic of Buddy Bench, See Something, Say Something, Assembly's Dylan's Wingman. These are some examples. You know, what's the status of things like that? When I really think about why I'm here, month after month, I realize it's to make sure that we keep the topic alive and as a priority. You know, let's remember what happened in Sandy Hook, it was an elementary school. Parkland, Santa Fe, so, too many others. And just because the tensions de-escalate and people disappear doesn't mean a risk does. So hopefully, I'm here to be a reminder that anything can happen anytime and anywhere, and are we doing everything we can to prevent this from happening in our own town? I have to add that based on some of the updates this evening, my faith is tremendously renewed, and I only hope that this momentum continues throughout, even throughout the summer, despite the kind of breakaway. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Just quick, I, I know some other parents expressed possibly an interest in Let That Be Smart about the, like, someone mentioned it at the last meeting, it was run by the mayor about guns in the home, and, you know, you sending your child to another home, and how do you ask, you know, well, do you have weapons, you know, that kind of thing? So that would, you know, are we thinking about that possibly as a district, as something for the parents, because the parent academy, could that work into that, or?
Okay. One of the recommendations that, that Chief Vitelli had made is, is assembly-type programs, public service announcements, what we can do with the Mawa Municipal Alliance, that's on our list for discussion tomorrow. So do I think it's going to occur in the future? I do. I want to do it in conjunction with those people who are experts in the field of which you're talking about.
Okay.
So, yes, it is on the list.
Okay, great, great.
One of the things the MAA is going to do in the fall is they're going to have a program on gun safety, and at that program, they're going to be issuing, well, trigger guards, three of each, to people in the community, what options ask, so it prevents, to help prevent kids getting over with firearms.
Another thing which may be something you may want to look into as a board is, there are some school districts that instead of detention, they have more educational, I don't want to say therapy, but more educational things to do with the children versus just having them do detention, you know, to help them, work them through why they ended up in detention in the first place, because personally, from my experience, and I've had experience with it unfortunately, it really doesn't do anything for the student. Just, you know, it really just does not do anything. And it would be better if, you know, there was some kind of mentoring or something to say, you know, you knucklehead, why'd you do that? You know, you shouldn't have did this, or you could have talked it out, you know? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and a motion to adjourn? Mr. Gallo, seconded by Dr. Morthe, meeting 9. Thank you.